Okay, it's time to get started. This is our May 13, 2024 Liberty City Council meeting, our regular session in our 418th Main Street. Welcome, everybody. It's good to see a good group of people here, people we want to recognize tonight. Thank you all for being here. At this time, I want to invite Pastor Carlton, please, when you come to the podium, please, and ask him to give our implication. Pastor Carlton is the pastor of Potter's Plate Fellowship.
Father, it's so great to be able to bow before you. But I thank you for this assembly, for your beliefs and your sovereignty. And as a need to ask your guidance, you're listening. Father, we have each and every one of you, as well as those in attendance and the leadership. Father, pray that the name of the forum, who represents that, whom name we call in the mission. Father, we just thank you for all you've done, all you're doing, for our wonderful name. We pray. Amen.
Father, extend me to the Lord.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
The man has been outspoken in prayers from his family. In the radio.
Present.
Jeff Massey.
Present.
Ron Wicker. Forever. Zachary Arms.
Present.
All right, at this time, there's going to be recognition. And I realized that I have not recognized, I saw that there was a new Eagle Scout, one of our Liberty students, and then I thought, oh, I know another one that was from last year. And I realized I did not take time to recognize our Eagle Scouts in Liberty. So I wanted to do that, as I was recognizing the 2024 Eagle Scouts. So we actually had two of them that were able to be present tonight. And I do have, their current troop leader is Mr. Kerry Bradley, and he's here tonight. So I wanted to ask you if you would step up to the mic and just kind of give us an overview of the Boy Scouts and the Eagle Scouts, what that means.
Well, first of all, Mayor Wood, Council, and other folks, you know, being an Eagle, it's a great honor for me to be here, recognizing my big Eagle Scouts, and appreciate y'all's recognition, too. That's so important. We have today, we have Elijah Aiken, who just went to his board last week, we have Isaac Ursery, who has had his Eagle Ceremony two weeks ago, and then Jacob Dietrich, I think a couple of years ago, and then the other one that I think people recognize was Gary Beattie, who went to his board. First of all, these are all products of Liberty Truth 227. But at the, kind of coming out of COVID, some other issues, Scoutmaster decided to retire, and we kind of merged troops. So I had the pleasure of the last two, Elijah and Isaac, having been Troops 821 in Pickens. But so we're kind of a Pickens Liberty Troop, is kind of what we consider ourselves now. And it was a great honor for me to be able to be involved with those two Scouts. Eagle is important because, one, especially people in the Scouts recognize, it takes a lot of dedication. It takes a good part of their teen years to get to that level, because you have six other rank advancements that you have to complete even before you start working with them. You have to earn 21 merit badges, 10 of which are 14 of which are life skill type merit badges, first day, business and chip merit badges, cooking, personal management, personal business, a lot of the life skills. And then when you finally complete all that, then you have to have an Eagle service program. And that's something that's very involved, that you have to plan, you have to implement, you have to coordinate volunteers, and that's usually very big deal raise funds. So that's where a lot of work, a lot of things to see, the work of the Eagle Scout. And it truly is a great honor. And I think the Scouts that are in Liberty before that you're recognizing are some of the finest Eagle Scouts in our system, since I've been doing it for almost 25 years. And again, thank you very much for letting me come and speak.
Yes, thank you so much for the investment that you made in our boys here in Liberty. And at this time, I'm going to be calling out the names, and if you are here, please step forward when I call your name. I want to recognize again, Mr. Kerry Bradley is our current troop leader. And then we have Mr. Garrett Bean, who was not able to be with us, who was a former troop leader. Garrett Bean is not present tonight, and I believe, if I have it correctly, he was earned his Eagle Scout 2022. And Matthew Farmer also earned his in 2022. And we've got Jacob Dietrich in 2022, if you will come forward, Isaac Ursery in 2023, Kayla Murphy, I don't think he's here with us tonight, he was in 2023, and Elijah Aiken for 2024. So y'all, bring them around. (Applause) All right, we're going to move on to the cemetery. It had come to my attention that there was some talk and complaints about the Black Maintenance, and there were some accusations going on regarding the City of Liberty and West East Cemetery, located in Old North Road and Stone Street. The complaint was referring to the cemetery on the west side of Stone Street, this common to refer to as the African American or Black Cemetery. It was also brought to my attention that there was a question as to the ownership of that cemetery that contradicted the common belief that it was the property of the City of Liberty. So this prompted me to check the county assessor's website, where I found Farmers Aid Society listed as the owner. I did some further research to verify my finding by consulting with the county assessor's office, as well as the county registered beat office, and the municipal tax office, where it was confirmed that there are no records indicating that the City of Liberty owns or has ever owned the west side of Stone Street Cemetery. I also spoke with the directors of the two funerals, the Liberty funeral homes in Liberty, and neither had any documentation to prove otherwise. And while this cemetery is not owned by the city, therefore, we're not legally responsible. But back in the 70s, back in 1970, the city made a generous decision to maintain the cemetery in order to strengthen community relations. And there may be times that all of our cemetery grounds may look overgrown, and it usually deuces each staff. But it is not our desire or our intention to let any cemetery go uncollected. After more research, it appears that Farmers Aid Society no longer exists as an organization. So our plan is to continue to carry on this big decision and tradition to maintain the Black Cemetery, along with our city-owned cemetery. So I'm just asking that everybody, please be patient with us as we work toward a solution to getting a better handle on the upkeep of that cemetery. So that was important to me when I found out that that was going on. So we're working toward that, and we'll start to see a difference soon. So that was really all I had as far as my announcements tonight. Okay. Now I'm going to move on to proclamations. We've got three proclamations tonight. And since they're already, I'm just going to let you know what they are. Building Safety Month is May 2024. So this is a proclamation that I, Erica Romo Woods, Mayor of the City of Liberty, hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Building Safety Month. This date, on May 13, 2024, accordingly, I encourage all citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities. I've also got the 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerk Week, May 5 through 11. And that, we are very proud of our clerk, we're very grateful our clerk Bailey, Bailey has been with us for a couple of years now, and she has really grown into her position. And so this year, while we are honoring all professional municipal clerks, we honor and we thank Bailey for all that she's done for Liberty to make sure that we've got our package, all the information that we need to run a business meeting. So thank you all, thank you. And I, Erica Romo Woods, Mayor of the City of Liberty, do recognize the week of May 5 through 11, 2024, as Professional Municipal Clerk Week, and further extend appreciation for our professional municipal clerk Bailey, and to all professional clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. So thank you, Bailey. And this proclamation is for Public Service Recognition Week. And if you were paying attention to our social media this week, or last week, we had, every day, we had a host that was recognizing all of our staff and thanking them for all that they do to help our city run smoothly, and so we can provide those necessary essentials, services to the community. So now, therefore, I, Erica Romo Woods, Mayor of the City of Liberty, South Carolina, hereby proclaim May 5 through 11, 2024, as Public Service Recognition Week, and encourage all citizens to join in appreciation of our public employees, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities. So thank you to all. And we will get these posted online, so they can be read all their addresses on there. All right, next, we have citizens to speak. If you have anybody in mind, if you would just call them.
We have handful of our members, pageant.
Being a council, I'm happy to see you participating in a protest, and to make it clear my disappointment with Mayor Erica Woods, council members Grayson, Witten, Ursula, and Pageant. Mr. Michael Calvert, our previous city administrator, was hired in 2021 under Mayor Peterson. Erica and I visited the city council prior to taking office, we spoke at length with the utility billing manager and the city treasurer, they worked for Mr. Calvert, and told us that this is where Mr. Calvert did not come to work, did not check in with them, didn't return citizen phone calls and emails, was rude, conditioning, and Mayor Peterson was on his way out and did not address the problems. The city treasurer at that time told Erica Woods, you'll have to watch his credit cards standing, you're responsible for all these purposes. At that time, there was one shitty credit card held by the administrator thereafter that the mayor resigned, excuse me, retired early because she couldn't continue to work with Mayor Calvert. The mayor gave Calvert even more responsibility, and since then, until he resigned, he spent city funds worth of abused employees, didn't watch the council in City Hall. The mayor and Calvert disrespected the Liberty citizens who was trying to help the city become ADA compliant. Erica refused to allow Michelle Johnson to speak at a council meeting because ADA compliance wasn't on the agenda. At that time, Josh Morgan, who was defending Michelle's right to speak, was escorted out. We are still not ADA compliant, and Michelle has just passed away, the mayor and council have taken no action. Mayor Calvert made many important poor financial decisions with our private funds without council awareness. Staff increases from 4 to 7 employees at City Hall, including the mayor, and issued all sudden a credit card. The new administrator, Mr. Trotter, they've been, has recently pulled off credit cards except for money. 100,000 pay compensation package for Calvert, which was approved after the fact. The purchase of two makers of parking lots for 155K for future multimillion dollar City Hall complex. 90,000 for retail strategies for a report telling us what we already knew. 2K a month, City Hall rate over the previous mayor Peterson, the owner of several dilapidated buildings. We are responsible for everything from roof to faucet. The city just recently paid to replace two recognition units in this building that the city does not own. The mayor refuses to allow residents in 25657, outside the city limits, to address council with their concerns. They aren't asking to vote, they aren't asking to hold office, just the right to speak at council meetings. This has to be changed to include the communication with all who call Liberty home. The bottom line, our elected officials, with the exception of Mr. Jeff Massey and Zach Arms, are disengaged with their constituents and their city issues. Our officials make bad decisions that can't stand up to scrutiny, then blame individual citizens for negativity. The city's lack of transparency, lack of policy, accountability, and communication is what sends the negative message to prospective business owners and residents. I'm here to share facts and commentary, and I will continue to do so. Calvert is gone now, and we have a new city administrator, a great fresh air caller, but we still have a member and four council members to hear from us, and we are accountable.
(Applause) People, we're not, we will not carry along this way, we're here to do business, and we're going to listen to people as they come up here to speak. But I expect, I expect, I expect civility, we have rules, we need to act like civil adults in here. We're here to listen. Typically, we don't have people come and speak until you're very angry about something, and we just need you to be civil about something. We're here to listen, but just be civil. And I will not have another outburst, or we will be escorting everybody out.
All right, our second is Yvette Stacey.
And when your time is up, it is up. You need to be respectful of everybody's time here.
Hello, I'm just outside. I wrote to my daughter, she passed away in 2022. She makes advocate for the ADA, if you will face, if you would, your advocate for the ADA, which is federal, to bring, to bring it to Liberty. She was denied access to speak by Mayor Wood. On August 29, 2022, she was denied to speak and was removed, trying to be removed by the police at the request of the mayor, all because she wanted to bring her to ADA compliance. But Josh Morgan intervened, and stepped in for her. My daughter passed away on December 3, 2022. Prior to, she had several meetings planned with your mayor to bring Liberty and bring it compliant, so you can use wheelchairs, and to bring it into the Rosewood Center. However, she was denied any meeting. I have contacted the ADA in Washington, and we should be hearing from them within five to 10 business days. And my daughter had appointments that they were coming here to the City of Liberty to make sure it became a fact. Also, she was planning to have a special swing for special needs children put into Freedom Park, where she was denied. We have five different business owners here in Liberty who offered to pay for the swing, $670,000. We have people that offered, but they were denied. So the children of the City of Liberty, the special needs children, have to go easily, and Anderson and Figgins, where the swings were put in, and the grant that was permitted was used accordingly. So that's what I have to say. And this will not end here with your mayor. It will end with Washington DC. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to have to have it escorted out. We're not here for a production and applause. We need to be moving on. And if people are not going to obey the rules, then we're going to have to be escorted out. So I will not have another outburst of applause. We need to be civil here.
Robert Freiman?
Yeah.
Robert Freiman?
Okay, time, we're taking time. See? I need the room.
I repeat the devil from the, I am the final. I repeat the devil.
Be of holy, be kind of light.
Through Jesus Christ, to review.
Sue Jordan.
I will afford you Jesus Christ, to review. Shut it up now.
Touch me, huh?
I told you before, through Jesus Christ, to remove the devil out of this place and out of our town. And if this is the way you're going to sit here, God loves me, the cold burning on my head.
Will you please remove that?
I repeat the devil from this room, I pray for my children to help, and don't you ever bring me, and who I love you, Jesus, to scare out of you. If this is the city.
No, you cannot.
I repeat the devil from this room and all this Christ, from this place, and I want it out through the power of my name and Jesus. That goes for everybody, I pray for the town with a peaceful way, but being silent is not it, for my name and Jesus.
Robert Freiman lead?
Yes, yes.
Gerald?
Hi. Good. I'm not here.
And a reminder, we will not have applause after the speaker, or I will have the room escorted out.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, mayor of the council. I want to thank you first, I call out in the name of the United States of America. I come before you in response to the proposed 324 budget. As you probably are all aware, inflation is the all-time high cost, and continued escalation in city underdresses as well. Liberty has the highest military rate in this province, including its current 23.1. If the budget fails, as proposed, this will increase by an additional 4.12% approximately $40,000 per acre in this 96.9. The city's increased military rates by 14.76% over the past five years. The increase would take that number to 18.88%. General fund revenues over the past five years has increased by 44.86%. The current budget under considerations looking at additional 4.12% decrease in military rates. This year's general fund revenue, the brand's new show, a 722% decrease in revenue in general fund revenue based on last year's budget. And we didn't even think of the progress of that there, on the years of frivolous spending, should not have called it this administration. The utility fund fund over the past five years, residents seeing a 14.73% increase in utility costs. The proposed increase this year will compensate additional 12.51%, approximately $180 per house. If we do pass this up, the increase alone for residents since 2019 will see a 27% to 24% increase since 2019. I encourage, remember, this board will follow down, reduce the burden for the citizens. Divide the needs for the positions critical for the past few years, sewer, mapping, IT up, relations. Stop the time of the former employee to live rent-free and utility-free in the city-owned home, self-propelling, offset costs. Cuddy and Versus Anderson, remember that. Past councils cannot find future councils. Contraction. Immediately implementation of impact fees. Use this cost, these calls here to offset rent-revenue, offset costs, self-propelling bridges from just a complex. Use the proceeds to offset costs. As part of the budget process, implement financial policy that require all non-budget expenditure above and beyond, shown by council, to be council approved. As part of the basic ordinance, implement contract review policy that requires council review prior to key contract. Consider council cost and recommendations to eliminate the need for general fund military rates. Desperate measures called desperate, desperate times called desperate measures. Council members, these numbers will ring about desperate times for your positions. Ask each of you to work with the use of tax program in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, I'm going to give a valuable data, a bit sweet to you. Just got, I think it's a desperate, a good time to fit the seat. I'll hear them all back.
Thank you. All right, may I?
Evelyn, Toby?
Good. When I first moved to Liberty in 2000, we had a startup of $1 million, fantastic mayor. Unfortunately, he passed away in 2008. Since then, I've seen a lot of mayors come and go. When I first heard about the meeting tonight, where everybody stood great up here, and asked you, Mayor, please step out and figure me, I thought about your feelings, how you must feel, you're really a lady like that. Then I asked myself, did you think about Brian's feelings or his finances when he made the decision about the roosters we tend? Did you think about the citizens of Liberty before you sought me free? I think every other option should be thoroughly investigated before raising our taxes. But I will be credit for one thing, you have brought the city of Liberty together like no other mayor has before. Okay? And to use one of your own sayings, for the love of Liberty, please step down. We feel the same way about you as we do about Chris and our fellow allies. Let's go, Brandon.
Peggy Nelson?
This is Peggy Nelson, William Allen. 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 This is Peggy Nelson, William Allen.
That money could have been spent on occupied sewer lines and other much needed things to improve liberty. Liberty's citizens deserve better. Liberty used to be a growing small town that you have everything that you need without going to Easely, to Rainbow, or anywhere else, but still had that small town faith. I've lived here all my life. My daddy was a business owner. He supported his family from a wheelchair. My parents and grandparents were greatly shocked and disappointed about the way things are now and the city goes. Our children and grandchildren deserve better in this time of COVID.
I have a girl that's helping me right now, I'm taking her mom. Um, Andrea, why?
Everybody, usually I'm out there taking notes that I know a lot of you have already read from different sessions. Uh, but last Tuesday, I sat at the budget workshop and I was absolutely disgusted. I just, I couldn't take it. I sat there, I had a pit in my stomach, and I thought, "How, as a city government, can we allow our financial state to get to like this? There is a proposed raise, raise in billings coming. How did you spend so much money on changes to a building, frivolous spending, and yet you're okay to come to us, the citizens, to ask for more money? There are ways to accomplish a budget without some dreary religion. I suggest you dig into those before you come to us for more money. You cannot continue to raise taxes year over year and expect a happy, thriving community. At some point, we need to remember we are a small city. We are not Rachel, we are not Easely, we are not East Clemson. We need to start acting like one. Stop buying things that are outside our range and putting ourselves in a hole year after year. Please work with each other, please. And look at other ways to cash a budget, or you will not have much in the city left to govern. Thank you.
Ted Edwards?
Good evening. I'm gonna read this on behalf of one of our Liberty residents. He is not a city resident. He lives in 29657. He is not allowed to speak here. He buys services from us, we provide our services for him. It is ridiculous that we don't come to a point to where we can have people who live in 29657 speak for three minutes. We're not talking about allowing them to vote, of course. Why in the world would we not allow them three minutes? Three minutes!
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask him before he orders, and don't take this out of his tongue on what you're trying to do. This person lives outside the city?
He does not live in city limits.
Right, he is a 29657 resident. And are his comments on the budget?
I'm sorry?
Or his comments about the budget? Is that what you're gonna speak about? Because what I was gonna say is there will be a public hearing on the budget.
Okay.
This is not a public hearing. This is a regular business meeting with an opening for general public comments. So if he wants to come to speak about, at a public hearing, that's a totally different thing, and it's solely about the budget. Um, I hope you'll be able to...
I agree, he's here, I'll ask him.
Okay, he's here.
His name is Jonathan Morgan, I'm sorry.
Well, customers that live outside the city are prepared to be affected by the budget. Budget can speak at a public hearing.
This is the budget.
But I want you to think that he's just excluded, um, you know, from company on...
There are whole items.
Is budget not only agenda for today?
No.
At the bottom of the agenda, there is a line item that says budget.
It said it'll be I get to do this in June. This is not the, this is not the public hearing. Public hearing is... I'm not saying, don't make comments, I just want you to...
Right, I'll leave it to you.
If he's speaking on behalf of, he's, you can't speak now on behalf of something he doesn't live in.
He's, he says that he can speak on whatever topic he wants to.
Yes, he can speak. I'm just saying that... I'm saying on his behalf of him, is what I'm saying, you cannot speak for him.
Okay, I want to speak for myself. Is everybody okay with me speaking on my...
Excuse me! We're not playing these games, okay? This is the meeting that I preside over, okay? And you all, and I'm trying to give you rules and make sure that we're being...
Are you, are you not allowed to speak on this?
Excuse me, I'm trying to speak! Okay. I'm just trying to instruct on how this works. It's not be smart, we're here, we wanna be civil. So I wanna hear from you, we wanna hear from you, the listeners, right?
Okay. So there are... Okay. Due to legal, illegal transfer of funds in high voltage deficits in 2017, Higgins County was forced to take over the cost operations of fire departments from the city. The results in the $156 additional tax fees for every in-city household and 125 or 120 additional fifty for those house-sized city, uh, limits per year. At the same time, the city created a position for a city administrator minister paying over $100,000. Increased mileage and continued taxes as if they were funding their own fire department. The city approved an increase in water rate of 12% and an increase in sewer rate at 15%. Uh, they did the absolute minimum to reduce operating expenses. To recap, they stole money from the fire department that was funded by, in, and out of city residents who were served by the City of Liberty Water Department to pay their own, to pay for their own pet projects. They raised water and sewer fees, they increased taxes, they increased fees across the board. If the county had not stepped in, the city would have gone bankrupt, bankrupt, and the county taxpayer failed out of the city of Liberty. The next four years saw the primary votes about raising revenue funds and reserves, followed by outsourcing public services and more, then doubling administrative positions within the city. Additionally, the city had been careless with spending, not looking at reducing spending. Now in our attention to increase taxes and fees again and again, county residents are being looked at, uh, to bail the city out and prevent increased taxes. County residents who have been repeatedly denied to, uh, the right to address the governing body that is, uh, surviving on the, uh, county tax grants. The city council currently has a member who is not even serviced by the Liberty Water Department, who is going to be voting on the city budget and water department revenue. By his and his wife's own admission, Councilman Haggard is served by East Central Water Department, not city, not the City of Liberty.
Hi. Ali, here?
I'm gonna move on. So, first of all, minutes. I have a motion for a person to present for April 8, 2024, my motion.
I'll make a motion.
I have motion by Councilor Ray Neal. Do I have...
I'll say.
Counselor, if I have a motion, if you're ready, do I have any discussion? I hear none. All those in favor of approving are minutes for April 8, 2024, and if written, please signify. All right, we have no unadmitted statements. What do you want to do in this? You have annexations to consider here. So the first one is annexation parcel number 40970051766 at 201 Witty Street, Witty South Carolina. You have to share with the common man.
The, uh, the annex, excuse me, the annexation packets are, uh, in everybody's council pack. Both of these annexations give the 100% annexation petition, meaning the order of record Patrick West's decision to leave and...
Do I have a motion to, um, annex in 201 Witty Street, Witty? I have motion by Councilor Shu, wait a second. Second by Councilor Whitaker, do I have any discussion? Mr. Page, uh... I hear none, all those in favor, please signify. I... And the next one is 100% annexation for parcel number 40881564938 at 101 Y. Do I have a motion?
Do my question.
I have a motion by Councilor Man, do I have any discussion?
Say it.
And second by Councilor Brady, do I have any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify.
Aye aye.
All right, so the council at this time is going to consider approval of a location for art sculpture by Duncan Burke. Duncan Burke, um, is a business over here in, um, you know, Ingo, um, right on... He works with metal, and he is an artist, so he has generously offered to donate an art sculpture for downtown. And we had looked, um, downtown and looked at the space, of course, in the courtyard, knowing that we are trying to, um, make our downtown, just add some more vibrant being light to, um, artists, all doing something that helps to, to bring in visitors to come downtown, so it's helpful because of what's happening. It's something that we want to unveil at a later date, but the space that we're looking at is in the courtyard, um, if you were standing on South Palmer Street facing the courtyard, it's actually gonna be, um, lined up with crosswalks there on South Palmer Street. So it'll be centered in the court, or with that crosswalk, and we're looking at and putting in a couple feet back, a couple feet back, um, into, just trying to make sure that we're not obstructing the view of the stage, if it was in the courtyard, we're getting the stage, um, but that is the place that we're looking at. And, and of course, again, we'll have a later date, it's got just about finished, and we'll have a later date that we'll be doing unveiling for that downtown. We'll make that movie to the public, and we'll celebrate an art sculpture donated by one of our business friends. Um, and I'm just gonna ask for a motion, and you're understanding where it's, where it's gonna be, um, and I'm gonna talk about what it looks like right now, that's gonna be something that we want to reveal to the public, um, but it is, um, a really great concept that he came up with, this was all, this was all him, I had no say, maybe else could do, he had anything to say, it was something that he was tied in on his own, thinking about the reasons, it was something that came to mind, and I really loved the concept. Um, so, all that being said, do I have a motion, um, to approve the location for the sculpture of, uh, by Duncan Burke?
Certainly.
I have a motion by Councilor Mars, wait a second.
I'll say it.
Second by Councilor Nancy, do I have any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify.
Aye aye.
All right. All right, up next is our administrator, Jim Ford.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, give some updates on some grant projects first tonight. Um, the water line replacement that is funded by the Skip Grant Program, um, received an update from our city engineer this morning on that project. Uh, all the water lines are actually in the ground currently. Uh, they are doing their final stages of their pressure testing, uh, and told that that should be wrapped up this week. Uh, we have had concerns about the water that's been running, uh, that is all in preparation of the bacterial samples that will be taken to the next process. They're keeping that water flushed out of those new lines because before they can start switching over the surfaces, they have to have clear DNA samples. So that is part of, part of the process. Uh, the reconnection phase, what will actually happen is unfortunately they'll have to go back to those lines, and they'll have to dig back up the new line and tap that line for the service connection to the residents. Uh, that process, they approximately about a month to a month and a half to complete. And once that's finished, we kind of reach, I guess, 50 to 75% of the project being complete. Why do you say that, Philip? Well, the next step is just as important as the first step. We've got to make sure that we're taking the proper steps to take the old lines out of service, because if we don't take the old lines out of service, they're gonna still have water running. So therefore, they still have the availability to create a leak. So we're trying to make sure that we finish this project, finish it well, and that final stage is taking those old lines out of service. Um, I will be coming back to council with updates on that. Uh, that's not part of the grant funding, so we will talk through if there's any additional costs, cutting in valves, and such as that has to be done. But that is super important, that we follow through with that and finish that project well, and work to take those old lines out of service. Uh, so, so that's an update on the skip for the water line process, our grant project. Uh, Olden Arches Quarry Road, we've talked a lot about that, that is a RIA-funded grant, um, World Infrastructure Authority, some good news there coupled with some bad news. Uh, we did receive an additional $50,000 in funding for that project. Uh, received a word letter in the last week or so into City Hall, that was received, uh, for the rock overages that were created during that project. Unfortunately, it lives in Liberty, and there's a rock quarry full of spot, so that's something we have to, uh, take into account when we're doing these projects. I guess the unfortunate use of, the unfortunate side of that is there is still a $71,953 balance that the city will have to cover regarding the rock overages on that project. Uh, quick recap there, Olden Arches was a complete renovation of the lift station that's currently there. Quarry Road, they actually did away with that lift station, so not only are we doing away with the lift station, we've taken away any maintenance that would be reoccurring there, we've taken away a power bill, so we're taking positive steps to minimize the amount of maintenance that has to happen there, and we were able to rapidly feed that down to the county lift station that is located right along Quarry Road there. So that is actually complete. Uh, the 2023 Annual Drinking Water Report for the City of Liberty has been completed. Uh, EPA has issued their opinion, and the water in Liberty is safe drinking. So we will be posting that on our website. Uh, that'll have to be, uh, a URL, will have to be put on water bills, we'll also run an ad in the paper, if anybody would like to see that report, we'll have that available. Uh, just a quick shout out to Bailey and Katie and City Hall, they did an excellent job last week recognizing the hard work that the City of, City of Liberty staff does on a day-to-day basis. So Bailey, thank you for all that you do there. Uh, couple updates from Coach Black at the Rec Department, uh, flag football tournaments are currently underway. They'll be finishing up this Thursday with a championship game that leads us into diamond days with baseball and softball. That leads us into Diamond Days with baseball, softball, and team ball. Liberty Pickens and six wild teams will be playing in Liberty. That will also be finished up with a Diamond Day COVID softball game at four o'clock. That game will actually be held at Liberty High School. If you would like to sign up, they are charging a fifteen dollar per person fee to play in that COVID. And reach out to Alicia Dover at the rec department. Her number is six four zero zero one eight five if you would like to play in the COVID softball game. That's all I have. Mayor, thanks.
Now we are next to our city council remarks. Councilman Shumay.
I guess I do have a couple of things I'd love to address. First off, there has been a rumor around the city that I never lived in the city. I want to address that directly and clearly. I still live in the same house that I've lived in for fifteen years. My next door neighbor's sitting right here talking, he sees me coming in and I'm pretty happy. There were rumors that were started and spread directly about me, about my personal life. And I want to make it clear, I have four children that live in my house. And those rumors don't just affect me. They affect my children. And in my mind, that's all that matters. It infuriates me that multiple people have come to the mayor and complained. You know, you have some councilors that live in the city anymore. But nobody has come to me directly and asked me that question. That's inexcusable. That is infuriating. I expect further than that of the people that I have spent the last seventeen years of my life living during with. Is wrong. If you have a question, come to my front door, my car or my bed or your front, I guarantee you won't hurt. For the last four months, I've been there every day. I lost my job in January. Finally got offered a U. N. Today for four months. So if you want to talk about the effects that taxes have on people, I feel it very closely. But when I hear people start commenting about things that my children might never hear in our community because they have, they do have walk-around blogs. And if you think things don't get back to them, it does. It's inexcusable. And I know several people by name that have made those comments. So if you would like to go talk to me directly, please do so. Otherwise, for lack of a better term, keep my family out of your room. Okay? Now, this is what I prepared. And if I step on toes, hope you have some silver coins. In the past week, my inbox has been inundated with emails from concerned constituents reacting to misinformation circulating on social media about our recent budget working session. Sadly, many of these messages resort to personal attacks. Instinuating a lack of moral fiber and character online and the rest of our council is parth if we allow for any support of a fee or tax increase. What's consistent about these messages is their reliance on partial information, incomplete information cherry picks by certain individuals who are posting on social media small, sensitive word concepts and varying word facts. In addition, one of our oldest state council colleagues has taken a hard line stance and adamantly opposing any increase that might result in citizens paying anything above what they currently pay. While the sentiment sounds nice, it may not be people. We don't know yet. We have not that far. But it is irresponsible, especially given the fact that we have yet to have received a written budget proposal to review. Please understand we had a working session. All that is, is our city staff coming to us and saying, this is our recommendation. That's it. Our task thus far has been to evaluate preliminary recommendations from our city staff to ensure, one, that we can be financially stable. And, two, that we comply with mandates from the South Carolina State Constitution, Article Ten, that requires every year we are required to have a budget that is balanced, whatever the plan. Let's be clear, no one on this council is fond of raising taxes. I am teetering, don't want it. I just told you. Four months, we've been living off my severance with a pay grade of six. I'm not fond of raising taxes. We know full well the impact it has on our households and those around us. However, if it becomes necessary to raise any taxes or fees to safeguard those essential services that we're paying for and maintain that fiscal stability, we owe it to the city and the citizens to at least consider all options. However unpopular that may end up being. The challenge facing the city didn't materialize overnight. Several people have made those statements today. They stem from years of poor financial management over multiple administrations. And it's gonna demand some decisive action to get us back where we need to be, even if that's a problem. Mr. Massey, if you have a viable proposal for balancing our budget with zero tax increase, I would ask that you would share with council before our, no, this is my moment. Before our unveiling on June fourth, that gives us time to look at it and review it. Absent of that, public posturing on social media serves only to undermine the integrity of the process. Offers little substance beyond rhetoric tailored to a local and toxic majority, minority on Facebook. His political brilliance and pandering is beneath him. Furthermore, I find it disheartening to witness our county council representative overstepping his boundaries and injecting himself into the day-to-day management of our city. That is not his jurisdiction. While claiming credit for an idea to exchange properties with the county, which, by the way, was something that we had been discussing in executive session for more than a month, but was not finalized yet, and he knew this. We were not cleared to share that information because the deal was not sealed. And our administrator felt strongly that we cannot put that out there until we know what's gonna happen. Our, our councilwoman did that without our approval, without notifying us, without telling us anything. He conveniently ignored present concerns that he should be dealing with and inserted himself into the business of the city. I'm gonna address one particularly. The one that bothers me the most is the issue of pornographic material that has been made available to our children in our county public libraries. This was addressed by more than a hundred citizens of Pickens County in a meeting less than a week ago, including several local pastors who spoke passionately about what this is gonna do. It was vastly ignored by our county council. They did nothing to stop it. Comments were made, we'll move it on a higher shelf and we'll see it. I don't care if my kids see it or not. I'm aware that that management doesn't follow the city council, but we have a library right in the middle of our town. And if we think that's not gonna affect our constituents, we're putting our hands in the back of their head in the earth. Ignoring the impact this is gonna have on a generation of these living in our city, while inserting himself instead into the management and day-to-day function of the city in election year is an election year gimmick. Such policy, politically, particularly in this election year, the tax detracts from the serious work that we are trying to accomplish and does a disservice to our city and our citizens, and it needs to stop immediately. Our city's future is not upon anyone's political gamesmanship. It's on each of us, the people that live in this city, to rise above that. Reject the toxicity, the divisiveness skewed by select few via their computer keyboards. We can't allow the honor of public service to be damaged even further based on personal attacks and cynical political posturing. The actions of a few very vocal people we prefer to cast don't fire their social media accounts. Only serves to push those who would be an asset to this city even further from considering serving because they don't want to get in front of them. We've seen what happens when people don't give their way. They simply quit and walk away because it's too slow and too hard. Instead, they criticize and attack those who are trying their best to do the hard work. We should instead focus on our shared vision for a thriving city, a thriving community, and the fact that we need to be walking together rather than stabbing each other in the back. I will not sit in this chamber and tell anyone how to do it. That's not my place. What I will ask is that you discern fact from fiction. You make an informed decision making. Ask questions of your elected officials directly, not by posting on our social media. I'm not all patient anymore. I won't reply to that. It's a waste of my time and honestly, it's toxic. No, I do it.
Will you bring escort Morgan out?
As we said here, you talk about all this blame on everybody else, but you have no responsibility yourself. You take no ownership of your own self.
Just taking notes, just taking notes. Every time he shows up, he's gotta be escorted out.
I'm asking you to reject the negativity and the toxicity that is consistently pervading these social media echo chambers. Facebook is not a place to convince anybody of anything because you only listen to people who are in your group to share your beliefs. It's not productive. Together, we can overcome these very difficult challenges that we're facing right now. And we can realize the potential of our great city, but only if we do it together. And we have to say in fact to the people who would tear our city down and betray us to all of the other communities in the area, this is enough. Either get with us to work with us or sit down and be quiet. Because it is not productive to tear people down publicly and do nothing to help improve it. If you don't have a solution, the problem is just a problem.
Thank you so much. That was very important. I appreciate that. Councilman Brereton. Councilman Brereton.
To answer Mr. Craig. You see all these people sitting down here? Take a good look at them. Look at all these people. This race, you should know. You live in the room.
Okay, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna call.
At that point, you're gonna be dead or alive or I don't have a choice.
No, it's you. I'm gonna call the board. I'm gonna have a good time. I am not, I'm letting him speak. I'm calming his tone because if the tone is going on, it's gonna cause problems. And I'm gonna calm him down. I want him to speak. I want you to speak, but let's not be pointing fingers. And the county city community said that is, that is going to, that is going to test related tests.
You can't ask somebody more than you want, right?
Jeff.
I'm better.
You need to just be silent.
Okay. Let me go over there. Daniel Brubel, I want him looking. Hold it there, because that's the word thing. Damn it. Okay? How many people I've known at the grocery store and spending fifty bucks for a local grain gallon of milk? You can't even go to Walmart and have that fatty groceries for fifty bucks and you want to raise these people's grades by two hundred bucks? You add all these rates, it's over two hundred dollars. Now, we sit up here with land all over this city, over three hundred thousand dollars worth of land we can sell right now to lift the burden off of them. They don't deserve this. They do not deserve this. The spending, you spent eight thousand dollars on freaking blinds for windows that are already clogged. Explain it to me just about that to me. That is not fair to him. It just about hit where D. B. R. Sparkle funds for air conditioning units. But for one, it's not voted on by his candidate.
Yeah, it was voted on the council to move the ARCA funds to general funds, so yes, it was voted.
I did vote on putting an air conditioner in. I even talked to plenty about that.
Okay, that's not what council does. The council voted to, to remove the ARCA funds.
To know anything that ever came to this person.
Jeff, you don't understand how.
Okay, anyway, next, next I'll move on. I'm sorry, boys, I'm trying to fight for you.
Oh, no, Jeff, Jeff, let's stop at the grandstanding.
We, I think we're saying about leaving.
Jeff, we're not doing this. We're not doing this. Come one quarter, and if you cannot be, if you cannot be civil and if you cannot talk at the grandstanding, you're not.
There's no grandstanding. There's no grandstanding. I'm speaking truth. I am speaking truth. People are fed up. And they're fat as you.
Okay, we're done. Mayor, what happened? What's the possibility here?
The chair controls any of our personal remarks. It is not customary for individual council members to lock or upset each other by name. They might object to a, an action, but that is not customary. So it is up to the chair to control the admin and the rest of us. And it's really reasonable to move on to your floor or the next.
Who else would move on? Um, Councilman Whitaker. I have the number one. Councilman Marner.
I would like to think that, that'd be that. I would like to thank the nine concerned citizens who emailed me about the, the budget and their concerns. That is, I think that, I've gotten two total since I've been in office. I've gotten nine this past week. So thank you for those who emailed me. Thank you all for showing up today. Thank you to Bill and our city staff. They have put a lot of work into getting our financial records back on track, getting what they believe is the best steps forward to us, for us to take that and deliver it next. And thank you for the behind-the-scenes work that you all do, especially with you, as you collaborate with the county. We, we definitely appreciate that. I, I understand how difficult of a situation this is. I do, I would like us to explore options such as selling the parking lot to help with this next year's budget and other areas of that. But we all have to realize that this is a very early step in the process. And it is, it's now, it now is the time to start looking at what can we do to help alleviate before we get to a military situation. I know their passions are high. There, there are a lot of people concerned, a lot of people who want to speak. I would be at Lizzie Sue's in Liberty at nine Saturday if anyone wants to stop by and talk to me. I do understand the severity of where we are right now. I do want us to remember who we are, what Liberty is, what it's supposed to be. We are a small town. We are a small community. We are tight-knit. Everyone knows almost everyone. I say that to say Facebook is a great tool for certain things, but we are not a series of Facebook groups. We are a community. And I really hope we don't ever forget that. Lastly, I do want to do a couple of shout-outs. This past month, our area schools have celebrated the teacher and supporting employee for each building. I just wanted to say that really quick. Liberty Primary School Support Employee Teacher of the Year was Tracy Reese of Tyam Reese. Liberty Elementary School is Jared Roper and Emily Smith. Liberty Middle School is Steve Anderscaro and Lee Amreese. And Liberty High School is Becky Cooper and Tammy Weiss. Thank you so much for those community members who pour into our children and making our future that much better. Thank you.
Okay, this time we're gonna be voting to go into executive session and we will be discussing in that executive session, sections thirty dash four, dash seventy, discussion of negotiations, incidents, proposed contractual arrangements, and proposed sale or purchase of property when received of legal advice or legal advice relates to offending, rent, or potential claims or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege settlement of the claim for the position of the public agency in other necessary situations involving the assertion of an entity agency in the claim. That's number one. Number two, section thirty dash four, dash seventy, discussion of matters relating to the proposed location expansion or the provision of services encouraging the location or expansion of industries or other business in the area served by the public body regarding retail strategies or personal listings, county contracts. City Council may or may not take action on any or all of these matters discussed in the executive session. So at this time, do I have a motion to enter executive session?
Motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Brady. Do I have a second? And a second by Councilman Shumay. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Alright, we are now in executive session and I would be cleared for a brief. All right, we are now in executive session, and I have a clear group, please. Anybody have a motion by councilman Gray to talk, second? And by Councilman Gray, do I have any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All right, we are now, we are now at the ready to session. Okay, we do need to announce dates for our upcoming new budget, budget, public hearing to all that, all the baby two counts.
June 4th will be the fall of theater, and fall of theater will be a work session, fall of the work session, there'll be a special call session, and we'll have a regular session, the attempt, and then a fall session rated later, that is.
Okay, all right, do I have a question, please?
Second.
And Councilman Gray, any discussion? Please. All those in favor, please say aye.